The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Farmington Town Council meeting and ask you to please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask for anyone to come to the podium who would like to give any public comment, and please give your name and address.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Emily Kalini at 30 High Street. And I wanted to just take a minute to urge the council that I know you have a lot of difficult decisions and lots of complicated things to keep in mind, but my perspective, I wanted to urge you to keep the Board of Education budget intact and to -- I've gotten to see Kathy's presentation several times as I've been at different meetings, and I think it's clear to me that they've done a very good job. They run a tight ship, and they're very efficient with the resources that they get. And as I've started following the budget process over the last couple of years, it occurred to me that the state -- the problem we have with the high school is sometimes that we've made small steps and ignored the larger picture. And I think that if we force the schools to go back and cut small things here and there, bits and pieces, we could potentially just continuing, you know, we're just kicking the can down the road. We know we have other needs that are coming up. People talk about that all the time, you know, what about the other buildings? What about the other schools? And so I would urge you in a year like this year where we are planning ahead, to give the schools, you know, the money that they need to do what they need to do to keep things from falling into states of disrepair that then require bigger problems and bigger fixes so that while the problems are small, if we can just, you know, put them to bed, that would be the best thing to do. And so I know, like I said, I know you have a lot of decisions and things you have to keep in mind, but I urge you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay. At this point, we are going to consider the proposed budget, the Board of Education budget. So if I could ask Board of Education to come up. That's okay. Yes. Welcome. What we will do tonight is, for everyone out in the audience, we are going to be going over the Board of Education budget. And we generally go through that section by section and talk about any questions the council has or any added information we would like. And then at the end, we're not taking action tonight on the Board of Education budget. We just listen tonight to the Board of Ed and tomorrow to the other pieces of the budget, and then Saturday, other pieces and the debt service. And we will have discussion then about how we're going to move forward. So with no further ado, Kathy, would you like to -- any further comments after last night, or should we just get started in the sections?
(inaudible)
Okay.
(inaudible) with the salary section, which are salaries. We'll get to that slide. It's about 66.82 percent of the total budget. There is a 1.75 percent increase or $77,550 increase in the salary series. And then I just open it up to any questions that you might have for this particular section.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
Are you going to give tentative approval to each section or not?
No. I don't think we did that last year with tentative approval, so thank you for asking. Okay, questions for the Board of Education for the first section, the salary account, certainly the biggest account. Well, I have a question I could start off. We know that you have two principals that are retiring from the high school, and fortunately, you've hired someone from the district, from Irving Robbins, and you're all set for that position for next year. How does that impact the salary? I know that's on the principal page, but when you have that, and that moves also to the turnover numbers and the turnover that you expect for this year. We have, you know, retirements and then people coming on, and generally that's -- so if you could just speak to first the principals and then that issue?
And then turnover?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so it wouldn't impact the budget in that the individuals that we've moved would be on similar levels, so it's not a savings in -- so what we did was we moved IAR's principal to Farmington High School starting July 1, and then the assistant principal at IAR moved up to the principalship. So we're now searching for two assistant principals, one at the high school and one at Irving A. Robbins. So at this point, because it's administrative positions, although not considered shortage areas right now in the state, so every year we get a memo from the State Department of Education, and they'll tell us which areas are shortage areas. And typically, shortage areas are places where there aren't enough staff to fill positions, and they usually come at a higher cost because they are a shortage area. Even though administration right now is not, it has traditionally been a shortage area for the state. It just isn't right now because enough people have their O-9-2 certification, so it's not considered a shortage area. But we don't anticipate that we would have a significant savings because we typically do attract people with experience when we do hire, and they come at a higher step. There's not as many steps in administration as there are in the teacher area. So I think there might be five steps. So it's fewer steps there. So we wouldn't anticipate any savings in administration. A teacher turnover, so there are three ways that we look at teacher turnover. So one way is when we start to start our budget process, we take what we currently have, our FTE, and we bring that forward. So if during the year, any changes happen, that gets corrected then because we only bring forward what we have to the next year. Then we take into account everyone who is retiring, and we know that by February 1st. That is part of the contract that we typically will know. If they've been with us a long time, they have to let us know by February 1st if they're retiring. Then what we do is go position by position, and we reduce each of those positions to a master's plus six.
Right, an average teacher salary, master's plus six.
Yeah, so an average teacher salary in Farmington, which is a master's six, correct? Yeah, just wanted to make sure because that can change given our average. And we bring it down to that level, except when it's a shortage area. So we don't bring those down. And of the 11 that we have, we did not reduce three of them. Three of the 11 that we had for retirements, we didn't reduce those three because they're shortage areas. And when they're shortage areas, they usually come at a very high cost because we're getting people, there are not many individuals looking for that position, and we're usually hiring someone with a lot of experience, so we didn't reduce on those. So we reduced the other eight. Then what we do is we look at previous years and how many people or how many, on average, would we have turnover from now after we've set our budget to the next fiscal year? And we reduce, we underfund salaries. And this year, we underfunded salaries by $250,000 anticipating that much turnover. And it's, you know, it's basically based on what we've experienced in previous years, and we always use the most recent year as an indication, and that's what we reduce the budget by. So you'll, you know, often we'll have a teacher turnover line, and we reduced the budget by $250,000 for teacher turnover.
Now already?
Yeah, so we underfund it by that much because we do anticipate that our history shows that we do have turnover from now until the next fiscal year. So we want to anticipate that and reduce the budget by that.
Okay. And you said your retirement notifications are February 1st, so you have, okay, that's what I wasn't, I didn't know either whether it was the end of March or whatever, but okay. So those you know some definite, and then the other is for the possibilities of, and you use past, most current years to figure that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other, Paul?
So first, just a couple of kind of quick comments. I want to echo actually the public comment we just had, that, you know, that slide that the Board of Ed chair had up yesterday that showed how much we do and how efficient it's run. When my wife and I kind of settled here to raise a family, there was two big variables. One, great schools, the other, low mil rate. And you can't have that without, you know, those kind of numbers. And, you know, that doesn't happen without a talented administration, and not just you guys, but even the people that work with you and for you. So I just want to acknowledge that first because, you know, we're going through a tough budget process, and the bottom line number is 3.8 percent total. And, you know, if we're going to get to an overall number that is something I can embrace, I'm looking for kind of efficiencies everywhere. So I, you know, before we kind of start, you know, some questions and stuff, you know, wanted to make that clear, that, you know, how much I appreciate, you know, what you guys do consistently. The, on the salary note, and Kathy, you kind of answered some of the stuff I was going to ask, but just wanted to clarify. So when a teacher is retiring, we know that early February, we base that in, and then we assume a master's plus six for the replacement. I guess one thing I wanted to get clarification on, it might be a little ignorance on my part, is I hear a lot about this is contractual, you know, this percent of the budget's contractual, we can't touch it. And I guess I just want to clarify what some of that means. So like when I hear a bus contract, to me that here is, okay, we just renegotiated a bus contract, and that's contractual, that whole thing, nothing really we can do about it. For the salaries portion of it, the increase is contractual, but some of these assumptions, basically, that we're making, the, what's contractual other than the increase? Is there a certain number that we need that's contractual, or are these all just assumptions that we can make to meet the Board of Ed's ratios? Like, for example, I know the Board of Ed has certain standards with teacher-student ratios at different levels. Are those guidelines that essentially we try to follow, or are there other contractual obligations that are built into this line item?
There are many different elements of the contract that affect salaries. It could be that we anticipate a certain amount of interscholastic sports, and by contract, if a teacher becomes a coach, this is how much it comes, you know, it costs to pay that individual. We also have team leader stipends, different ways in which we create structures and systems to get work done. So there's lots of different elements of our contract that we are budgeting for so that we would continue those elements of it. And then, you know, the GWI, as you said, and the step increase. So in this particular budget, we have a 1.5 GWI on max step only. So the only GWI increase is any of the teachers on the top step, and then everyone else goes up a step but does not get a GWI. That's what was negotiated in this contract.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of, I mean, basically, we're kind of bringing everything we have forward to this year, and then there are some additional FTE that we put in this budget that we, you can see, it actually goes over that on page 15. This is kind of an overall look at staffing and FTE. Overall, non-certified and certified, there's an increase of 4.1 FTE in this particular budget. Yes, sure.
Paul, I'll just add a couple of points to what Kathy's saying right now, too. A couple more additional things. This would be a good example of why a person would be getting a higher compensation next year. Maybe they're attaining their PhD. So, and that may be a little unexpected to us. We may know they're in a PhD program, but Dr. Horowitz just got his PhD. So then he gets by the contract, now he's in the PhD category, and he gets a additional compensation for having that level of education. Another one, Kim was just mentioning to me, is the retirement stipend. So per the varying contracts, when a person retires, there's the stipend per the number of years that they have worked. This is not their retirement that they're getting from TRB, but this is, at one time, a retirement stipend from the board, from the town.
But you have to work a number of years to qualify for that.
To get to that level.
Yeah, it's to promote longevity.
Yeah. And we do, we do have good longevity in Farmington.
Yep. To touch on, and thanks for clarifying, I mean, this is all helpful. On the FTE note, so we're, I guess, and one, this might be an easy question, or you might have to get back, I'm not sure, but is there a way through, like, and I don't know what the word is, if it's attrition or where, like, let's say we are well below the Board of Ed guidelines for a teacher-to-student ratio at a certain level, and we're close to it in another level where we can still meet all of our needs and, you know, not cut services or anything, with, if we increase some of those ratios, still within the BOE guidelines, but, you know, without necessarily all of these FTEs?
So we do that.
Yep.
Kim goes through the staffing, and we find, although you see an increase here, there are lots of decreases that offset the increases. So we really do look at what we need as opposed to just hitting a particular policy guideline. And every year, Kim meets with each principal, goes over that, and she finds efficiencies. It might be a scheduling efficiency that we find. It could be a creative way of, you know, financing a particular position. I know we were able, sometimes we're able to actually provide more with less. I know that sounds strange, but we are able to do that. A great example of that is providing specials to pre-K students, and we were never able to do that, but we ended up being able to do that, but have Excel pay for it. So we're always looking at creative ways that we can increase or provide better quality, you know, programming for our students, but do it in a creative way. So I don't know, Kim, if you want to give some examples of just...
Well, sometimes it's enrollment-driven, certainly at the high school especially. We look at class sizes and student interest in courses, and I meet with the high school administrative team and go through enrollment as compared to FTEs. And we might say, you know, this course is just year after year, not highly subscribed. We think we could find an efficiency there. We're not going to offer that course anymore, and either shift the instructional FTEs to a different department where we have burgeoning interest in enrollment, or maybe even just eliminate that. And, you know, one example this past year I can think of is in our strings program at the elementary level, we looked at enrollment in second and third grade strings, and in one school in particular, we had lower enrollment. And so for a year, we were able to, you know, decrease staffing for that. It may come back. We want to be responsive to student needs, but we don't want to overstaff just in case or just so that, you know, we hold on to a position when we don't need it. So I really do go through school by school, program by program, and look for ways in which we can find those efficiencies. And certainly just overall in terms of class size. I think that's why we hold some unassigned teachers, because we monitor that enrollment every couple of weeks, spring to summer. And, you know, you may see classes at 21, 21, 21 in a grade level. Well, some parents may say, oh, that's getting high, you know, we want to be sure that we have low class size. But we don't assign someone until we're really sure because we also have sometimes, you know, withdrawals. So we really do look carefully, and we're not just saying, as long as we hit the 19.5, you know, class size average, we're done. You know, we monitor it class by class and school by school.
Okay, thanks.
Edward, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up something that came up during the public comment section of last night's meeting. So someone mentioned that, how there's two assistant principals at the Farmington High School, and they made the suggestion that, why don't we just not backfill the one position that will be retiring within a couple of months? So Kathy, you being the expert, I really wanted to get, one, your reaction to that, and, two, if you could walk us through what the impact of that sort of decision would be.
So if you think back at the ranking slide, out of 169 towns, we're 160. In what we spend on general administration and on school-based administration, we're 143. So we achieve at the top 10 level in almost every measure in Connecticut, yet we are spending, you know, at very low levels for administration. It has been a design here that we are lean on administration because we want to put as many resources at the student level, where our students are in classrooms, and we want them to have the resources, whether it's material resources or the personnel needed, so that we can provide, you know, a stellar education, K-12. So we, knowing how lean we are administration, we also are balancing increased mandates from the state especially, not really the federal level, it's the state level, on operations and administration. One good example of that is teacher evaluation. For ever, we had our own teacher evaluation document. We still have our own. We've tailored it to Farmington, but we have new guidelines that we have to follow which take more time. So our administrators evaluate more teachers than other districts. It's very time-consuming. There's also a lot of new HR mandates that we are having to follow. So at Central Office, it's becoming more and more difficult in human resources to try to adhere to all of these mandates, and they're increasing every year. If you look at the legislative proposals right now, there's a list that I can't believe of all the new mandates that they're hoping to achieve in this legislative session. That puts a real strain, I'm sure, on Kathy's staffing and on our staffing. And so we work really hard with our various associations, whether it's the Business Administrators' Association, the Superintendent's Association, the Board of Ed Association. We're all working to have Farmington's voice heard and try to give legislators the perspective of how difficult this is. I could not imagine reducing by an administrator up at the high school. In fact, they're asking for more help up at the high school, and I would anticipate that I would be looking for more help in the future at Central Office because of all of the additional expectations at the state level. But it's also our own expectations here in Farmington. We have very high expectations, and our community has high expectations, and it's a lot for that team to cover up at the high school, and they do a fabulous job, but it is challenging for them. So that would not be a place that I would recommend, given the rankings and given the number of requirements we have on administrators in Farmington.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
And just to follow up, with those mandates, dollars don't follow that, do they?
Nothing, no, no dollars come with them, no. And I try to say when I'm at any type of legislative breakfast, every mandate costs money. There's never a mandate that I've received as superintendent that didn't have personnel time associated with it, which costs money. So we're always trying to communicate that as much as possible.
Paul?
This is a little bit more broad, but since salaries is the biggest part of the budget, it's probably appropriate to bring it up here. But so we had targets, 2% to 2.5%. And I appreciated everything Chris said yesterday about how we're working in a partnership and not as adversaries, and there's, everybody has a different role and a different hat to play. Again, kind of putting my hat back on, looking at this bottom-line number. One question I'd have is if we, and I'm not saying this is what I necessarily want, but if we were to have a budget for the BOE within that range, has there been any kind of broad number crunching on? And I assume it would maybe be somewhere along the lines of salaries, whether it's less FTEs, what that would look like in terms of programming? I guess from my perspective, if I'm going to support something, I really want to understand what the alternative would have looked like so I can really, you know, look at people in the eye and say, this is why, you know, I am where I am, and this is what the alternative looked like. So is there any kind of conceptual, at least, you know, what that would look like? And I guess if it's more appropriate at the end, that's fine. I bring it up now because I don't know if it's more directly related to salaries and in that discussion.
So we, we already, through the budget process, it's close, it's not exactly a percentage, it's close to a percentage of about, I believe it was 522,000 that we've, yeah, a little over 500,000, that we cut out of the budget already. So during the process that we use, and all of these individuals sit at the table, and we go to each school, and, you know, I am always trying to bring a budget to the Board of Ed that is what we need. You know, that's important, and there could be wants, but we know that we have uncertain support from the state. Municipalities like Farmington, it's quite uncertain where things are going to go when it comes to the support that we are provided by the state. So we always have to keep that in mind as we're building a budget. So we go, you know, school by school, program by program, and I make reductions in the budget. So they, I will say, our principals and program leaders already know they need to come in at a reasonable level, and then they, we sit down and we kind of go line by line from through the budget, and we make reductions. Sometimes, I mean, there were additional staffing people proposed, and you don't see them in this budget. And so I want to start by just saying, we do a lot of cuts before to try to bring it into the board at a level where it's what we need for the coming year, and it maintains programming. And so start with that, and that's where we were at the 3.02. If we were to go further with any cuts, and we were going to try to get to the top end of the target, we would be increasing class size at the elementary level, and we would be outside of the board policy. Now, I'm going to say this, that this, these are the places where I would see we would have to cut. I am not the final decision-maker in that, so I would bring those suggestions to the board. I would explain the impact of each of those reductions, and the board makes the final decision. So I don't want to say that this is final word because the board has a final word.
And I know, not to interrupt Kathy, but I know, Paul, that there are certain things that have been discussed, board members that may not be on Kathy's areas, too, so it would be subject to an open discussion of all the concerns of all the board members. So, yeah, it's, it would be, it would be a difficult discussion, but Kathy?
Yeah. So one would be class size, because we really are at a point where it's staffing, like you said. To find that kind of reduction, that's a significant reduction. We would increase class size in mathematics at FHS. We would have to reduce art opportunities for students. So again, this is all staffing. We would have to reduce... We would have to reduce professional development for social-emotional learning. That is a big focus for us, but we would have to reduce that. We are, as you can see by our budget, continue to have concerns about social-emotional learning and the supports that our students need. So we had planned, Kim is right now leading a committee with Dr. Singer on social-emotional learning, and we had anticipated training next year, which we would have to eliminate. We would, once again, to try to prevent additional impact on students, we would unfortunately have to go to facility projects and look at our major facility projects. We would also, and Matt doesn't want to hear this, we'd probably have to go to technology and postpone or slow down our technology plan. Also reducing adult support for students by reducing parent professionals. Potentially reducing self-insurance reserve. We're right now experiencing some of the worst claims that we've experienced in recent years right now. So we really didn't do a lot as far as reduction in the reserve in this budget because of that. And we have 20-year-old textbooks at the FHS, and we wouldn't replace the 20-year-old textbooks we have. Again, I've said no in previous years to this request, and it's at a tipping point, so we included it in this budget. We would also have to assign more of the excess cost, special education grant to the special services consulting line. I worry about this, because it's a volatile line in our budget, which often goes way over what we anticipated. So that would be a worry for me. But that's generally the areas that, if we were to try to get to that area of the top end of the target.
To that, 2.5. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy, for everything and all the hard work that you guys have done. I just have to just kind of repeat some of the stuff that Paul had said, that I think that you guys do a great job in your budget. I think it's very thorough. It's easy to get information offline. I know I've outreach to your office for some clarification on some stuff. And so I have a few questions, and because salary is the big number, we have to do our diligence to make sure. So we talk about turnovers. Can you share, and I think I had asked this through the chair of the town council to the chair of the Board of Ed to provide some numbers for turnover. What does that look like this coming fiscal year? And what was it last fiscal year? Do you have that information?
I know it's 250,000 this, going into the next.
FTEs.
Oh, FTEs.
We do have FTE information here.
Do you want to just bring this up?
I'll take it up there if you got it.
Thank you.
So I think we were asked, this is what we thought we were asked, so I'm going to...
Well, it's hard when it goes through multiple different people.
Yeah, yeah. So the last five years?
Yes.
Right? We were asked, for the last five years, what was the FTE, certified FTE on July 1, when the budget was set? And then what was it on June 30 of each of those years? So in 1415, you could see that we started with 358.45 FTE, and we ended with 360.75 FTE. And then in 1516, we started at 370.05 FTE, ended at 372.65. In 1617, 373.7 FTE, ended at 374.1. 1718, 375.4, we ended at 374.75. In 1819, 379.65. And then we ended, we ended last year at 376.5.
So this chart that you gave us, so basically, it's showing what we started and ended with at the end of the year.
Yes.
So obviously, we can do the math. Okay. And so basically, we are anticipating this year, how many are we losing nows? Three people, or three FTEs, I should say?
For 1920, for...
1819, this fiscal year.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we're anticipating that we're going to end there, as it looks right now.
Yeah, so that's approximately three FTEs? 3.15 FTEs. I know, and I'm very familiar with zero-based budgeting. And I was just trying to get my hands around some of the financials that are posted on the website. And when I was doing my analysis, and I was looking at the financials for the end of the fiscal year, and it's broken out by categories. So the end of the fiscal year last year, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So this is the financial statement that was delivered to the Board of Ed, June 30 of 2018. We have all the teachers or the administrative salaries in this category listed as salaries. At the end of the year, there was a plus, which I would call it, in my business world, a hot number, meaning that it was over budget of 402,000. Am I reading that correctly, or?
For the, for when you're summarizing?
Yes, the total, the total salary line.
Correct.
So the reason why I'm asking this question, I just want to understand what contributed that in terms of your zero-based budgeting, and how that all worked based on, I think we, 3 points something, FTEs being reduced. I think you, when you do your budgeting, you factor in, or you guys project what that is. So what drove that hot number last fiscal year?
So this is the 1718 year?
No, this is 1819.
No.
Oh, yes, 1718. Yes, you're right, 1718.
1718, so it's the year before.
Correct, yeah, we haven't...
Yeah, where it's maybe, yeah, a little...
So...
So that number, just so I'm corrected here. So 1718, we had a difference of maybe one FTE. And we have a hot number of 402.
So within, the number you're saying is all the salaries? It's all the salaries?
That are contractional salaries, right? Are the majority of them?
So you have the administrator's some salaries, principal's salaries, teacher's salaries, directors, so on. It's all the salaries. So I could break down the 402. It is broken down on the...
No, I see broken down.
So like, if you talk about, in principal's salaries, there was, at the end of the year, a remainder of 35,441, following me, on the specific line?
Yes.
And now I'm going to, and I may have to ask Amy or Kim to confirm on it, but I think in that year, we had a turnover of a principal.
Administrator.
An administrator, an administrator who left early in the contract, resigned and left, took a different position. So that would have left dollars in that area. But I could give you the exact detail of the 35,000, how that broke down. It also could have been the hiring that year, when we pushed forward the principal's salaries, and then we made a hire in those ranks, and it didn't come in on the step that we expected. Then there could have been a savings. So that's, but I certainly can break out the 35,000 exact for you.
Yeah, so the only reason why I bring this up is just, you know, zero-based budgeting is looking for efficiencies across the board, even including in salaries. You know, based on my analysis, and, you know, I was able to go back five years in looking, there has been a consistent overages in that line, or hot number in that line, which is fine. I just, you know, I'm not looking to reduce any services in the schools. I'm just looking to find where we can do some efficiencies. You know, as we started off our town council meeting, where we set a target out there. And part of the reason why that target came out the way it did was looking at the data that was available.
Right.
So that's all we use, is the data that's available. So now, I just would like to understand what that means to me. So in the future, we all can plan appropriately. Now, when I go through the next five years, you know, it's reasonable to have some hot numbers in there, because it's hard to predict the people leaving or retiring. And I know it's very hard to do budgeting and all that stuff. So that's where, you know, again, we're looking for efficiencies. I appreciate what you were talking about in terms of what potential reductions would have to happen, what it would look like if we went down to 2.5. And just that fiscal year really stood out to me. And I really wanted to make sure that we did everything that we can do to look at those categories to really come as efficient that we can with our zero-based budgeting.
Yeah, so I'll give you a few scenarios. So we, like I said at the beginning, we under, we do underfund this position. I mean, this certified staffing every year through teacher turnover, because we do anticipate a certain amount. A lot of what happens during a budget year has nothing to do with teacher turnover. It's illness, it's pregnancy, maternity leave.
Got it, okay.
It can be something very tragic happening, where someone can't return to work. So there, all of those things happen. And there are times where people, you know, we, they don't, in the case of a maternity, I wish I could predict who's going to go out on maternity leave every year. I can't. And so next year, I could have eight individuals go out on maternity, and then we're, they're, they stop getting sick pay after a certain amount of weeks, and they stay home. And then I pay a substitute at a much lower rate.
Right, right.
What I have to do, which is responsible to the board and to the community, is take what I know. What I know is who the people are today. I'm bringing them forward to the next year, and then I'm adding the 4.6, if you look at certified, to that using the average salary there. I've already reduced for retirements. I've already reduced for teacher turnover. I can't predict if someone gets ill. This is, a lot of this, or most of this, is either illness, maternity leaves, or something more significant. And in this particular year, we did have that. And, you know, that is an anomaly. But we've had that where someone, you know, someone making over 100,000 is not in work and not getting paid. And it's a whole year. You know, that does happen. I would never have anticipated that. So I can only bring forward what I know, and then underfund it by teacher turnover, what we anticipate. But I can't predict what's going to happen within a year. There are times where someone resigns. We can't find another person to fill that position. It goes unfilled for the year. And it's a shortage area, and we are not going to settle. So if we can't find the right person with the right fit, that's not going to, it's going to be vacant. What do I do? I have to go to, I go to our consultants, and I pay them to provide that service. Because I need high-quality service for our students, but I can't find someone. So then you'll see consulting lines going way over, because I didn't anticipate I was going to have to hire a consultant. So there's lots of things that go on in the story each year of a budget, because we're working with human beings, and things happen, and, you know, people's lives. And that's usually reflective of how this, it does look in this way. And it's typically because substitutes are, you know, end up coming in at a much lower rate than what we were paying that person, and all the other scenarios that I shared.
Sure. So during your budget process for the salaries, you don't use any statistical data on people's being, you know, because we know people are human, people will be out sick, and people will have things going on. So there's no data analysis to kind of factor into your overall budget for that?
Well, the teacher turnover is...
Just the turnover.
One way in which we do it. We never have, and I don't know of any district that does that, because it is an unknown. And, like I said, I might have to spend a whole lot more on consultant services.
Yep.
So then, although this is lower, that's higher. It, you know, and as you can see in that year, it was 249,023 over.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, when you say hot, it was 400,000 that we were talking about?
It was the amount in all of the salaries. So this is, this is all the salary areas of the entire Board of Ed. So administrative salaries, principal's salaries, teacher's salaries, directors and coordinators, student services, teacher substitutes, tutor home bound, instructional aides, secretarial, clerical, nurses' salaries, monitors, drivers, and custodial maintenance. And all those categories that netted out to have a, to...
Surplus, whatever.
Well, it had a remainder of 402,589. But I'm just going to restate one thing that Kathy said at the end, which is one of the most important ones. Then if you went out of our salaries area, and you went and you looked at our services area, that's where consultation services falls. Because when, so if we had a, for instance, very specialized, specialized teacher leave the district at a certain school, and then we couldn't hire that person, but then we had to hire that person through a service, it wouldn't be in salaries. It would be in consultation services. And then it would look like I've got a saving inside of teachers, but actually, I have a big negative in consultation services. So when you get to the bottom line of the board's budget, it nets out to be less.
Gotcha.
And that number that I gave you was not in consultation, right? Oh, no, it was. It was in consultation services.
Yeah. Which is made up of a lot of things. But that's, that, that is an example of how that's used.
I mean, I think I've said this to you, to you, the three areas that can go in a different direction in any particular year, and that's self-insurance, which we're experiencing right now. Where what we budgeted is not what we're coming in at. And facilities, and this year alone, I have many more bills that I need to pay for FHS, because we're, again, experiencing quite a few leaks up at the high school, and having roofers up there that I didn't anticipate we'd be spending money there. And, you know, there, so those are two of the areas, and the other is special services. And you'll see, if you look at any one of those years, you'll see areas where special services, like consultation, even in transportation. I could not anticipate having to give individual or small-group rides to particular students that now I have to do that. So that adds another van, or another couple vans, that I didn't anticipate. So I am also budgeting at a moment in time. I can't predict the future. So you're going to always see other lines going over where I can't predict. And I don't want to over-budget, because I just know what I know. And so, you know, that, you'll see lots of overages in special services each year.
Sure.
No, you can go ahead.
If you were still in your line of questions?
No, that was Paul's line of questions. It's yours now.
Lost track of who was talking. So thank you again for all the hard work that I know you and the board and all your administration put in at budget time. So what we're talking about here is a school district that's managing over 380 FTEs, right? That covers all categories?
No, that's just certified. There's 609, this year, 604.92.
That's your total. to take into account with sick leave and needs of students, and all those fluctuations, I know it's, it's a challenge. Not related directly to salaries, but you mentioned the ranking of 160 out of 169 districts for general administration, and that plays into salaries, obviously. My sense is that Farmington has a model that is very, very lean, particularly in this, this is our lowest number on the ranking, right, for highlights, for 160 out of 169 for general administration. And I have very mixed feelings about these rankings, because I think it shows fiscal responsibility, but I also wonder if these are always numbers that we should be proud of, because I think it can sometimes, you're on the, it's a very fine balance between being lean and providing what needs to be provided, and that your staff and faculty are supported, and with these mandates that come through, and we know that needs of students is just ever increasing, and not just special needs students, but all students. So I really commend you on that, and I just want to remind the Council that this is the kind of district that we're, that we're operating and that we're overseeing. 143 of, and just school-based administration is still, still very lean. But I looked at per pupil expenditure, and this is probably a broader issue, but because we're talking about the bulk of the expenditures, which is salaries, I think it's just notable that right now, the most current figure is that Farmington, if I'm reading this right, Kathy, is below average, below the state average in per pupil expenditures. We're 100 out of another ranking, 100 out of 169.
Mm-hmm.
And we're making great strides and doing great things with our students. So I guess that's really just the, what I wanted to comment on, that kind of the big picture, and what you all are doing with some really tight numbers. So, thank you.
As I said, Beth, last night, there's no pleasure in being 169 on this list either. I mean, it's, it's, you don't want to be number one, you don't want to be 169, so.
Oh, around the expenditures, though, one thing I did notice as far as going back, we have been below half, so below the halfway mark in the state since 1990, if I'm reading this right. So I'm on page CD2 in the back, which is comparative data tab. Again, if I'm reading this right, it looks like Farmington has been in the bottom half for student, per pupil expenditures in the state. We go, I mean, the numbers go up, but that means.
Go ahead, Bruce.
So, I, I know that I brought up the question about the salary line, and there was one thing that I just wanted to, because my thought process as I was going through this and looking at the book, I know that the 2018, and I'm on the tab, that's the color tab over there, you don't have 18, 19 in there.
Oh, right, it should say 18, 19, not 19, 19.
Is that incorrect, or?
Approved budget 44.
It says 19, 19 twice.
Should be 18.
18, 19?
In our binder, it says 18, 19.
Yeah, I, yeah.
The second line?
The second line.
The second line.
In the bottom left corner.
It should say 18, 19.
19.
You're right, it says 20, 19, 20, 19, but it should be 20
18.
18, 20, 19.
So, the, the reason why I wanted, because when I was looking at the financial statements, and I understand that the financial statements are actual numbers versus what's in the book is budgeted, but you also have an adjusted budget line in your financial statements, and those numbers are different in our book, and I believe in our book is what was originally presented to the Council. And I think there were some adjustments that you guys probably made at the Board level, which is completely fine. And, you know, at first, when I was first looking at the $400,000 in that line, I thought, oh, well, there's a discrepancy, because at the Council, we're seeing a different number of what was originally presented versus what's in the financial spreadsheet that you have. So obviously, those ending totals will be different for us. So there's no consistency in terms of, because right now, that number that we're seeing that says 18, 19, there was about a $90,000 adjustment. In the financial statement, the adjusted budget is $90,000 higher than what you have in the book. And I think that's fine, I just wanted to clarify that if.
I'm going to look at that.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then, while he's looking that up, I was looking at the enrollment history. And again, I just want clarification, hopefully we can get it. This actually is your October 1st, 2018
Enrollment.
Enrollment stuff?
Mm-hmm.
And, as of October of 2018, based on what was projected for enrollment, and I know that it's very hard to project enrollments, I read through your whole document, and I'll just highlight two things. The year before, we had a plus of 46 above what you projected, and then last year, it decreased by 19. Does that, and again, I was just trying to find answers to why certain things happen. Do you, does that impact your overall student ratio? Because when, when I heard what you would do in terms of if you had to come in at a 2.5, you would have to increase, potentially, the Board would have to consider it, if it went down that path. In 18, it went down, your budget of student enrollments was 19 less than what we predicted. How are we trending this year? I know it's 19.
It should be in that.
It should be in the October 1 for this year.
Yeah, I'd have to grab, I have to grab.
Yeah, I thought I had enrollment report in front of me, but I don't.
Or maybe it's one of these.
I'd have to look at it, so if you
Oh.
Yeah, I would need to look at the report. Typically, we are, we have more students than we anticipated, typically.
I, I found
It might be that this year, we, I'd have to look at it, but
So, I found it.
Okay.
It's, you're projecting 72 less.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have
So basically, for 1920, what was projected was 4,078, and this is with the special ed district as well. Push-up numbers, I'm assuming it says 3,997. It's, again, I just want clarification if I'm reading these reports right.
Okay, just give me a second as I
Sure.
I'll find it. It's usually in October, so I just have to go to that.
Well, Kathy's
Sure. You can have my, if it's easier.
Yeah. So, last year, when the budget book came to the Council, it was in the new budget book format, the object report. The presentation document that you get takes accounts and objects from different areas, and puts it into the presentation. Last year, and Beth's trying to find it right now, we had a crosswalk that showed where some dollars were in different parts of the old budget book, and the accounts were moved inside of the presentation document. So, we're going to find that, and then I'm going to show you, demonstrate the difference that you're talking about. So it's shown in different parts of the budget presentation.
Okay.
Okay, so I have the report. So which page are you on?
18.
And this is looking to the 1920 school year?
1920.
Yeah.
I, again, I
Yeah, no, it's, that's fine, because I'd rather have it clarified if there's any. Okay. So, we use retention ratio as the more accurate, because of the, if you look at cohort, there's a page in there that shows the cohort starting in kindergarten, what they end up in, in 12th grade, and we always gain many, many students. So the push-up numbers are there, because they're important to have. If we took every child and we just pushed up those numbers, what would they be? But we also know that cohorts gain students every year from kindergarten on, so we use the retention ratio enrollment projection as how we, that's what we base our budget off of, which would be 4,078 students.
Okay.
So that's when Kim said she goes to each school, and she goes over all of this, those are the numbers that she's looking at when she's figuring out FTE, and ensuring that we're within Board policy, and also, you know, try to find efficiencies when we can. Because the other part is, and, and I know this is, can be even for the Board, we could have an increase of 20 students at the elementary level, and depending on where they fall, we might not need another teacher. We could then have an increase of 10 students at the elementary level, and because they all fall at Noah Wallace in 3rd grade, I have to add a teacher. So it's, even though it looks, you know, a certain way, and if we just divided, it would be that way, but they don't come to us, you know, the, those 20, you know, student packages.
Right.
So they, you know, wherever they fall, we, we can't, you know, run one class at 30 students in the elementary level, so sometimes we have to add a teacher. Even though 10 students wouldn't call for that normally, it's just where they end up enrolling that it could create an additional need for an additional teacher.
It's, it's really hardest to predict at the kindergarten level, so in the Class Size Report, it shows, for example, that East Farms, we're, we've budgeted for four kindergarten teachers, because the enrollment projections told us that we would have approximately 80 students. Our principal at East Farms has 80 students coming to the Good Start program, and she knows from years past that if we have 80 students in March coming to Good Start, we're going to have many more than that by the time September comes. So, we're already concerned about that, and, but we base our budget on the projections that tell us this. So that's, and yet, sometimes we'll be able to say, however, in 3rd grade at East Farms, we had seven students move away, and so we can shift a teacher, you know, to the kindergarten instead of hiring a new teacher.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Patty.
So, I'm piggybacking on something you said earlier, Kathy, because I'm imagining that salaries and teacher numbers aren't entirely driven by enrollment, but can also vary depending on what types of specialties you may need to serve. And you mentioned the social-emotional learning training as part of something that might have to be cut if we were to reduce it. And I was reviewing the Governor's proposed, one of the many proposed budget items from the Governor, and there was a line item for adding and improving social-emotional learning in schools, and I'm imagining that would be a curriculum change and would require a change in terms of who the school hires. Are there, and I'm pleased to hear that Farmington's ahead of this curve, potentially. Are there other potential curriculum changes or anything in the near term that we know about that is going to drive changes in hiring and salaries?
As, you know
Proposed?
Proposed by the state?
Proposed, or if I've missed something, that the state is mandating a change that's going to drive the salary number?
I, I can't think of anything as a clear example for this coming year that we figured into our budget development process, other than the social-emotional learning part, in terms of specific curriculum. I mean, our, our, we're, the new science standards, the NGSS science standards, and the test that will, was a field test last year, and is a, is an actual test this year, you know, has caused us to look carefully at science instruction and staffing in science, but we did not increase it for next year at all. But it's certainly something that we're keeping an eye on, and, and what the state might tell us in terms of the sequence of science instruction, and especially at the high school level. So, I can't think of anything for next year, but.
And going to turnover that we've talked about too, I'm assuming with the science instruction, that would guide if you lost a science teacher who you were able to hire in response to losing a science teacher?
Yes, and we, we have that this year. We have a teacher retiring who is a science teacher, and, you know, it's a high priority hiring focus for us to make sure that we bring someone on board with, you know, expertise and knowledge and training in this next generation of standards in science.
Thank you.
And also, just in the FTE, with this focus on social-emotional learning, there are additional positions in this budget that are focused on that particular area. We have a 1.0 social worker that we would be adding, a 0.5 special education teacher for a therapeutic SEL-type program, 1.0 mental health professional district-wide, part of our care team, we're trying to expand that, support to teachers and administrators for students who, you know, might be experiencing, you know, a crisis and need additional supports, or their IEP already has that support. We're also adding a BCBA, but we, at the same time, we had a BCBA through consultant services, so we're reducing that, so that the BCBA will be our BCBA, and instead of three days, we're going to get five days for the same amount of money.
What's a BCBA?
Oh, it's a Board-certified Behavior Analyst. Specifically, goes in and provides support to teachers when it comes to students who might have, like, self-regulation issues that, you know, we're working on with the child.
And some of this, I imagine, would be required either through an IEP or
Yes.
I O four plan.
Yes, that definitely is the case, yeah.
Nancy, if it's okay, I think we do have an answer for Bruce.
Oh, okay, great.
So, I'll just have Beth have her, she just looked it up.
Sure.
So, the number you see on the monthly financials, the $90,234 higher, is including special ed van drivers, which in our budget book are considered services, because they're not salary.
So what is it, special ed van drivers?
Special ed van drivers, yeah.
And you don't have, I thought, so those are, you do have a line for van drivers in special services, so that wouldn't fall in that, that category?
What object did the van drivers fall?
The van drivers are part of Object 510, which in our budget book is under the Services So this, the monthly financials are based on the old budget book setup, and the new budget book setup, they're in services. So that's why you're seeing a higher number on the monthly financial budget amount.
And when we transition to this new budget book, we did have a crosswalk, so we could provide that crosswalk, if you'd like.
Yeah, it would
Last year, we
It would be
Let's, our second year.
Thank you.
Other, CJ?
A few things. I think we, we hit on a lot of different topics here, obviously. A few that I appreciate hearing about, last night's question about the Assistant Principal, I think you answered that very well. You know, the fact that we're 160 out of 169 doesn't necessarily mean you can't cut a position, but you, I think you gave a good explanation why we need that, a lot of these mandates coming down, so I appreciate that. The enrollment, we've been talking about the enrollment and the full-time equivalence. The numbers of teachers, and it's been touched on a few times, that we have now compared to from this chart 1415 this chart fourteen fifteen, we're up six point three percent in teachers. Enrollment is up one point six nine. In past years, I know that's always been a discussion point. Enrollment is not up as high as the number of teachers. In the past, one of the answers was always, we have certain special needs that we have to address, so there's one-to-one educating. It's not that the class sizes are just necessarily going down. Could you just explain those number differences?
Sure. And what are you starting with, sorry?
I'm starting in fourteen fifteen, just from this chart here. We had three hundred and fifty-eight point four five, we're up to three eighty-one point one. And enrollment in the same time period from the comparison chart was up one point six nine. I'm assuming that's, it's not a huge number difference.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is definitely what you said, special services. And we've talked about, we've built some specialized programs here so that we're educating students in district so that they can access all of the programming that we have, but that they have their needs met here instead of in an outplacement where they would never get all the opportunities we provide, and they would not be with their peers. So with the boards' and your support, since I've been here, we've developed several specialized programmings, and that is an increase in FTE in the certified and in non-certified. But in the end, that is a very- it not only reflects excellence in programming, but it's also much more fiscally responsible to take that approach. So that's one area where you would see a major driver in that. Another area is full-day kindergarten. We, in that time, we've implemented full-day kindergarten, and so we doubled our kindergarten teachers. That was a programmatic decision, not a mandate, a programmatic decision, and it really came from our community. It was our community asking for this programming. We were one of maybe a handful of districts that had half-day kindergarten in the state of Connecticut, and we moved to full day. So that's another reason. I would also say that, and I don't think it's had a huge impact, but we are seeing changes in our population that would necessitate additional teaching staff for English language learners. So that has increased quite a bit over the time that I've been here significantly, and so we have added both non-certified and certified positions for our English language learners. That is a mandate that we have, that services, but we, those services, but we believe it's also the right thing to provide those services. Our students, our ELL, students requiring ELL do very well here in Farmington very quickly, and we believe it's because of the support that we're providing outside of the classroom through ELL personnel, but also inside the classroom in giving our teachers professional development in that area, so that they're setting up classrooms that are conducive for students who come to us without English as their first language. Those are generally some of the areas. I don't know if my friends at the table could think of others, but those are the ones that I can think of.
I mean, we've done, we've tried to support students at the secondary levels who have significant reading issues. There have been laws passed recently regarding dyslexia, reading difficulties associated with dyslexia, and so we've better, we've been better able to address students with really critical literacy needs by training new staff to address those needs.
And mental health support has also been increased over time. Psychologists, social workers.
Social workers.
Those are areas that we've had to increase, given student need.
Okay. And we can assume any of these new mandates that come from the state will potentially add more needs in that area. Not something we have to address right now in this area, but something to consider. I did hear a mention of the second and third strings enrollment being down in certain years. Didn't that used to be mandatory? Didn't everyone used to have second and third strings? Was that for everyone at one point in time or no?
I don't think so.
No?
It was not for everyone, no. But we have so many students participating, it almost feels like-
I think my wife told me that.
Your wife told you.
We shouldn't let that out of the bag, then.
That's okay. That's all I remember.
What, can I ask, what year was kindergarten? Can you refresh me? All day, all day was what I meant to say. Like, three years ago, was it?
Fifteen sixteen. Three years ago.
Fifteen sixteen.
I'm sorry?
Fifteen sixteen.
Fifteen sixteen, okay. Yeah, because that doubled the elementary since fifteen sixteen. Well, you'd, each year, you started and then, oh, no, that was foreign language. That's another, when you added foreign language-
Added world language at the elementary, yes.
World language, excuse me.
Yes.
See, together, we've hit all of the items, yes.
And that was each year, you inked-
Added one.
Added one level, so that, like, first, second, third, that kind of thing. And a question, a follow-up I have is, right now, so much changes between the time you begin your process of this to now. Where is your, and you said you check it, you know, with the number of teachers, but what about the elementary unassigned? Were it two? Have you seen any cha- is that any diff- that's a number I know that fluctuates till the end of the year, but that's an area where a lot of times, things have come up and then we have one less, or, you know, you take one back out of the budget or something, and I just wondered where we were at with that.
Yeah, so from fourteen fifteen, fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen, we actually needed more than what we put in the budget. And then seventeen eighteen, we utilized the two unassigned. And then in eighteen nineteen, this year, we've only used one point two of the two point oh that we had in the budget.
Right, because I-
So it's, we did not deploy the whole, two point oh FTE. So I think it goes to what Kim was saying, you know, week by week, we're monitoring it, and if we don't have to deploy, we don't deploy a teacher. But if it, if we get to a class size level in a particular grade level, then we would. And at times, we've had to do, we've had to deploy, and we always go to the board when that happens and say, you know, we actually have more than, more classes than we have FTE that are over, and we need to add additional FTE. So in this year, as we're looking at nineteen twenty, we already know of the two point oh, one point oh has to be deployed because of what Kim was talking about-
Right.
-in East Farms.
Right.
The kindergarten enrollment is already at a point where, usually, East Farms gets a great deal of enrollment in the summer, so if they're already at eighty, we know we're going to probably need an additional teacher there for a fifth-
Right.
-section, just knowing the history of East Farms and what we see with kindergarten enrollment. So that's what we anticipate now. The rest, we're looking at closely.
Well, we have, right, other fourth grades, three other fourth grades that look close in the twenty fours by class. So that's kind of the number at which we start to say we're, we don't like to go over twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Paul.
I won't have this many questions every section, I promise. The, and I might be duplicating someone. There's been a lot of numbers, and I very well might have missed something, so I apologize if I did. So the four hundred and two thousand number for seventeen eighteen that we talked about, do we know what that was for sixteen seventeen? I just want to get a feel for, like, if that's an outlier or- or even like, yeah, sixteen seventeen?
It was two hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-three.
Okay. Of surplus, not in the black, basically, or?
Again, that's just in the salaries section of the financials, but when you go to the, when you net it out-
Correct.
-with all of the areas of the financials, it ended up being, at the end of the year, the surplus ended up being, at that moment in time, ended up being nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars.
That's sixteen seventeen?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's never, that's never truly the final number for the Board of Education in its surplus. You have to go through the audit process because at the end of the year, there's a certain amount of dollars that are encumbered for items that are purchases and different things, and that number is locked in place, and it's found in the audit. And then during the entire year, those purchases come in, maybe a good example would be it's towards the end of the year, him when authorizes some type of a piece of furniture that has to be fabricated for a school, like a library desk or something, and it's big, and it takes months to come in, and then it comes in, it's paid for, and that brings the encumbrance number down. The encumbrance number never goes to zero, though, so there may be still some closing out of purchase orders, which, when the audit's complete, you get an actual number to what the real surplus back to the town's general fund is. So it's, it is higher than what that nine thousand dollar number, you know, that I said, because some things just-
Right.
-come in less than what it was expected, or frankly, isn't, the encumbrance is closed. Yep.
That helps. So it was nine, that explanation helps a lot, nine for sixteen seventeen, I believe. All right. Thanks.
Other question? Go ahead, Bruce.
Again, we keep on talking about salaries, and I know that in the presentation that was delivered last night, and it was talked about, especially this slide, that sixty-six point eight-two percent was contractional. Is that truly the scenario of?
Were you talking about the, let me just get the presentation. I think it's the slide, could you go to the slide that goes, it's towards the beginning, where it goes over the three point zero two? Yes, that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is an exercise that we go through for the board. The board wants to get a sense of what, what areas of the budget are beyond salaries benefits, you know, that type of thing, like what additional funds. So we always go through this exercise of showing, you know, salaries and benefits. And again, salaries is taking everything and bringing it forward and then adding any, or taking away any positions that we had done throughout the budget process. So that is the number there of the increase, and then what the benefits increase is. Then we had a transportation contract, which is a significant increase, and we don't typically see that large an increase in transportation. So we wanted to highlight that for the board because that is a budget driver this year. Not every year is transportation a budget driver. This year it is. And then kind of other, what, you know, in the other category. So we say contractual because salaries are all based on contracts that we have with various association.
Yeah, so looking at that again.
Yeah.
Just so I'm on the same page, so there's seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty, or one point one eighteen. What's that percent? It says percent increase, but our book says one point seven five.
Oh, that's just of the three point oh two. It's a different way of looking at it.
Oh, got it.
So of the three point oh two percent increase only, that's what salaries account for in that particular percentage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, I think that's it for now there. We'll move on to benefits. And you did mention that you were not in a good place at the moment, so why don't you speak to where and what this, what the chart means, the self-insurance?
Sure. So for a few, a few years back, the board was experiencing some pretty significant pressure on stop-loss, in the stop-loss world, and our, on our stop-loss premium. It's not so much that way over the past, over this past, most recent history. I think I started updating the board maybe in December, saying that I began to see a trend beginning, that our claims were, general claims were trending not as well as they had been trending. I want to first, though, quickly say, and because I just met with our Cigna team yesterday, and still, even with our current, current trend, we're still doing better than other folks, other groups, like, similar to us. So I still have to say that.
Other school districts, you mean?
Yep. Other, other similar-sized, I don't know about school districts, but I think Cigna uses a similar number of folks who are in-
In a group.
Groups, yeah. So that was clearly said to, to us at the table. But the trend is not as good as it has been for the past few years. We're hoping, and the district's insurance consultant, Steve Scholl with Gallagher Associates, was there, and we had deep conversation, you know, that this is a blip and that we're going to get through something right now. But beyond hoping, we're also listening very carefully to good ideas that are being presented to us for ways to work towards, any way that we can improve it. So, so the reality is, we had, you know, especially the past few years, not in stop-loss, but in regular trend, very good trend. This year, it's not as good of a trend. When I had the initial information given to me from Cigna, and then when I looked at our, how our trend is and talked with, I spent a lot of time with Amy Barrett, who's focused on health insurance in the district and has been for many years. And then I also consult with our former district administrator, Mike Ryan, on this topic too. You know, I came to the percentage increase that I think is, is needed, you know, the joint self-insurance fund, and I always follow the town's policy. I go see Joe prior to making these recommendations to Kathy, and then thus the board, you know, so that I am, Joe and I are having a conversation about where the fund balance is and what I'm thinking about doing. And currently, I don't feel, he always asks me the question, do I need to go to the fund in the current situation? I don't, I don't think so in the current situation. But do I need to see professionally, do I need to propose having a larger increase in this area for next year to make sure that the fund is healthy? Yes, I do. And so I had that conversation with Joe. So I, while I have hope, the current situation is not as good as it has been in the past few years. That's why the percentage increase is higher.
And that would speak to the nine point four eight increase?
Yes.
Of where you feel you are right now and where you're going?
Yes.
As far as-
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So I did read some of the minutes, and I watched the videos. I know when it was presented back in December, Vince, you had indicated that you communicated to the board that it was, you know, not trending well, but then I think you also communicated to the board that it wasn't as bad as what you thought. And I know that you had a meeting today with Cigna, so this increase, because this is doubled, and I understand the nature of why it is, so I'm not, you know, blind to this. So this eight point six nine percent increase, when you came up with that number, was it, was your, was it at the time, from your original reaction on how the trending looked, to it was, it improved a little bit based on what I understood? And I know that you just recently had a meeting with Cigna. You may, may not, can share if, how that is at this point in time, because I'm sure the board wants to hear it first, but we're right in the middle of the budget, so it would be good to understand.
Sure.
You know, based on your knowledge today, this number, was it what, from your original reaction on, in terms of, was the trending really bad based on what you communicated to the board, and then the next month, it wasn't as bad, but still trending high?
Yep.
I'm not saying that it wasn't trending high. Just curious, like, how this month is going? Is it still acting the same way?
Yeah. Well, I can, I can just elaborate a little further about it.
Sure.
And, and you are, you, Bruce, you do point out something that's very important. I do have to talk first with the-
Yep.
-with Kathy, actually, and then I have to talk with the board on the- on this topic in more detail. But the trending was pretty poor when I first said it, is that correct? And then I had that one month where it was not as poor, so that's true. It's still overall trending over, if I'm looking back now over the past few years, not as well as the past few years has trended. So when you combine these all together, the trend may have immediately improved, just a inkling, but it is still not where I would like to, where we'd like to see it. That's one comment. Second comment, there's moving parts, lots of moving parts in regards to things with self-insurance. And while I started out being a little bit more optimistic about stop-loss, I'm not so much optimistic about stop-loss right at this moment. So when I am giving my thoughts and then giving my advice to Kathy about things, I may see a little positive here, and I see a little negative here, and I'm finding myself being brought back to where I am. So it's a, it is a, self-insurance in itself is a, it's a big part of our budget. And I still feel confident with the number that I've projected right now as needed.
Thank you.
Other questions for this account? I'm going to go to 21, to the retirement contribution. You speak to that, please. 40% change. I know it's small with the $64, but I just wondered what that was.
Page 21?
Yeah.
That's just the number of retirements.
It's just number of retirements, okay.
Yeah, so based purely off of total number of retirements, and I think we have 11 this year. And last year, we did not experience this number. We had.
Nine.
Nine, nine last year.
Okay.
So, and then again, to earlier what I was saying, it's a total number of years, this calculation done for some of our team members who have been in Farmington for 40 years, who are retired.
Forty-plus years.
Forty-plus years.
Retiring now.
Who are retiring this year.
Okay, other questions? Is this where you would speak to the issue of the new programs, the new insurance program, and people coming onboard, and what the board is going to have to put in?
For?
HSA?
The HSA, yes.
For HSA?
Mm-hmm.
Well, inside of our bargaining agreements, is that what you're asking? Has there been changes? There have been some changes inside the bargaining agreements that, while minor, are positive in regards to the board's contribution to the HSA, if that's what you're asking, recently. Yep?
Page 18, that line item's at the bottom of page 18. HSA contribution of $850,000. I assume that's.
Yes, that's, okay, thanks. Okay, if no other questions, we'll go on to services.
So this accounts for 13.83% of our total budget, and there is an increase of 3.91%, or $352,880. And this is driven, no pun intended, by our transportation contract, and including new GPS and video cameras on large buses for safety and security purposes. So you find that all in the services area, which is a major driver for this particular area.
Questions?
I just have to make a comment. I think you guys did a fabulous job on this category. I think the amount of benefit that you guys are going to get with the bus contract with those GPS, I think that is fantastic. I was very excited to hear that. So, great job. I think my only thing is, is I know that you guys are going to get it to us, the crosswalk, because this is another category that has a difference. I just would like to understand what those differences are.
Absolutely.
Questions? Okay. Supplies.
So this is 2.75% of our total budget. It's down 0.53%. And this is just, gives us a variety of supplies, you know, health, instructional, all different types of supplies, our office supplies, testing materials, library supplies, all of those areas.
Any questions?
What aren't we using, if you're dropping that number down?
I think, is this, is there, in the gasoline, not that, I'm sorry, not that. There was the, was it the entry, the safe, the cameras? Was that this area, or is that under services where we had a decrease? It might just be zero-based budgeting, and just, you know.
You're saving a lot on gasoline, it looks like.
There's a little bit in the computer supplies, and that was some of the printer savings. But, I mean, it's fractional, but.
But the cameras were in services, right? Did you see the decrease?
I don't know that one.
We're just so proud of that decrease. I wanted to highlight it. If we've missed it, we've missed it.
I think the other thing, too, and I'm not sure if that's a contributing factor, is that there is, that's another category that has a discrepancy that helps that number look lower than, so, in terms of a crosswalk document?
Oh, okay.
Close to $80,000 difference.
So on the, on supplies, so you have the total decrease, you know, $10,000. But if you go to page 76 in the budget book, and you're looking at the object about gasoline, that's really where the material change is about that. And some of it had to do with the way that this new contract with M&amp;J is, where there was an area where it was paid out, and now it's in the contract with M&amp;J, so it's actually in the per-bus sum fee. And, excuse me, and some of it had to do with just the language of the new contract, which is outlined in the budget book. So that's where the decrease is.
Anything else?
So just on that, the 29 and change of savings is somewhat offsetting a bit of the 221 and the increase in the contract, potentially?
Yeah.
You're not paying for gas on top of the contract?
Ultimately, I'm not going to frame it as the savings, really. There was not a, the contract is higher than what the contract has been in the past. And the additional pieces to what we're getting in the contract are more than what we were getting in the past. So I won't frame it as the savings, because it's really, it was paid out of a certain area.
It's shifting from one area to another, correct?
Correct.
When I say offset, we're offsetting it from supplies into services.
Correct.
Yep.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, equipment.
There's a slight increase in this series, 2.36% increase, or $9,202 increase.
Questions? Yes, go ahead.
I'm pretty sure we discussed this last year, and I can't remember the answer. I see Chromebooks are outlined in the account detail. Are they not considered capital, or is there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The Chromebooks sit in our operating budget.
Okay, thanks.
Yes?
And following up on the Chromebooks question, how many Chromebooks does the 72,900 on page 83 represent? How many Chromebooks is that?
That is roughly 400 Chrome, uh, no. That's roughly 700 Chromebooks.
700?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Those are student Chromebooks.
Those are student Chromebooks.
Sorry, how many was that?
700.
Seven.
Can you refresh us again about the program? That's, I mean, you have a number. It's in Farmington High School, Irving Robbins, you know, it's in the schools. What's the program?
Correct. So we've been weighing this for several years. We've been, right now, we sit in, our Chromebook model is a classroom cart-based model. So every year, we're purchasing Chromebooks to replace aging Chromebooks. The ones where, we, last year, we aged out the first, basically the first set of Chromebooks that we brought into the district, the remaining, which were Samsung models, which is kind of, that kind of is the, that's the mark of, those were the first Chromebooks that entered into Farmington Public Schools, and they've now left. So we've been monitoring this over several years. Each year, the question comes up as to why, you know, why are we doing classroom carts? Why don't we do take-home one-to-one? We've weighed it year after year. We entered into that, into the classroom cart model originally, based on cost efficiencies. At the time, it was too expensive to purchase a Chromebook for every student, so that they could take it home. It was more efficient for us to have carts. And they would walk into a classroom, they'd pull it off the cart and use it for their class, put it back when they were done. Over time, we've kind of watched those, watched the costs come down a little bit. We've watched the integration to curriculum go up. I mentioned this to the Board of Education during our budget process this year, that we're to a point now, both from a funding perspective and from a curricular needs perspective, that it's basically a wash for the district to look towards a true take-home one-to-one, which has some advantages and some disadvantages. The advantages being accessibility for students, to technology and to digital curriculum, outside of the classroom, as well as inside the classroom. There's an equity factor there for students that may not have access to techno, regular access to technology at home. So the, and I'm getting, I'm kind of giving you guys the backstory behind why Westwoods and Irving Robbins in the high school. It's going to take us a couple of years to kind of work this, work into this, but the draft proposal is a four-year cycle. Again, with handing a Chromebook to a student, they would receive it in fifth grade, keep it for four years, so through eighth grade, and potentially get another one in ninth grade, and have that through their senior year. In order to do that, we purchased at Westwoods last year. So the entire Chromebook fleet at Westwoods was refreshed. I'm kind of building that in. Those Chromebooks are going to move up with those students. So we're going to backfill this coming summer, hopefully, with, and put the new devices into the fifth grade and into the eighth grade at Irving Robbins. And then there is a small batch that'll go to the high school just to cover some of the repairs and devices that have been damaged over the past couple of years. And again, this is a proposal, this is nothing we've decided that we are definitely moving forward on. But the reason for Westwoods and Irving Robbins is to set ourselves up. So again, if we decide to move forward with a take-home one-to-one, those new Chromebooks that will be in the hands of our fifth graders in the fall will then just be literally handed to them, and that will follow them through their eighth grade. So we're starting that process. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Questions?
So when did we get the first Chromebooks? The ones that we're retiring now, or we're graduating now?
Twenty-three. So they came in 2012. The first batch was purchased for the high school, and that was done in 2012. The first real large batch of, and that was more of the pilot that year. The first large batch, which filled out the high school and a small, a small collection of that middle school, happened over the summer of 2013.
So you were saying four years. Is that what we're expecting, the future life of these, or just with each student?
So we're getting roughly four to five years out of our Chromebooks today. Given the fact that we'll be handing these to a student, they'll be carrying them back and forth, the expected, the maximum expected lifespan is four years.
You don't think they're going to get more wear and tear if the students carry them, do you?
There's actually, actually, a lot of the data we've seen from surrounding districts is, it actually balances out. Because you're giving the device to the student, they take more ownership of it, because it's their device. Whereas, they don't typically, if they're just walking into a classroom, pulling it off of a cart and putting it back. So it does actually even out. I've compared our repair numbers, our maintenance numbers, to surrounding districts that have had one-to-one, take-home one-to-one programs for several years. They started out that way. And we're roughly neck and neck in terms of both costs and numbers.
So you're not sure you're going to do that yet, but it's.
There's a few, there's still a few moving parts. But it's, I'm hoping to go to the board once, you know, this spring, late spring, and we're going to talk through some of the particulars about the program itself.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay.
I guess I have one.
Go ahead.
It just said something about instruments. I know we've heard from the Friends of Music that there's a replacement program or a fund for instruments that stay at school, for specialty instruments, or, I'm not sure exactly how that works, but I know it's been mentioned to us before that that is a need, and I do see some money in here for Irving Robbins, for instruments. I'm just wondering if you have more information about how that program works, and is that funded here, or is that something that you weren't able to bring forward? That may be what's requested.
So I know the Friends of Music is working actively to try to support, you know, with an equity lens, opportunity for all students who want to play an instrument to have access to one. So they've done some, like, instrument drives to try to solicit donations from parents. So, you know, many students, most students rent an instrument for the year. But occasionally, we have a student who's not able to do that, and it's wonderful that we have an instrument available for a student who would like to play. And there are times when certain instruments don't travel back and forth, because they're so large or susceptible to damage. So we do have some instruments in our classrooms that are being used by a student during the day, and then they have their own at home. So I think these requests for instruments are, you know, judiciously included in the budget when the music teacher believes that this is something, you know, he or she has had available for a long time. It's at the end of its life, as, you know, an instrument can be eventually. And they have interest built up in playing that instrument, and they'd like to replace it.
Okay, so between Friends of Music and the board?
Right.
To meet those needs? Thank you.
Other que, CJ?
Since we're talking about music, I noticed in Union Elementary, they're also looking for some music assistance, or maybe that was last year. Could someone explain what a boomwhacker is?
Kathy knows the boomwhackers really well.
I might be able to find the video.
Totally wrong. Totally my fault. I introduced everyone to boomwhackers at convocation, and now they, they want them for their schools. Yeah, so together, we played instruments, boomwhackers, together at convocation, and then we distributed them to the schools, and they were a big hit in the schools. So they, depending on, like, their size, they play different notes, and.
It looks like an accordion tube made out of plastic, and you whack it on your hand, and it'll, you know, it plays a note. It's, if you have a little one, it's a lower note, and a longer one, it's a higher note. And you can read the colors across the screen, and all 400 and something of us played a song together with our boomwhackers. together with our boomwhacker.
If I could make sure that I bring some next year to the budget.
Oh, good.
We could do a Star Wars theme.
Oh, there you go.
Together.
Other questions? Okay, dues and fees.
Dues and fees, just a 2.87% increase and I think it's just, you know, our liability insurance, right? Just that increase, right?
Yep. I did talk with Joey, gave him some guidance in regards to insurance increase that's in there. And very minor increase in our memberships line, memberships like for CAPS or CASBO or the different special memberships.
Any questions on those? Okay. Okay, we have had, it's five of six. We can keep going if people want to just keep looking at this. Capital is actually our next account. I know we've gone through that in detail, but are there any other comments from, from you, or do people here have questions about the capital? Do you want to have more just, you know, comments about anything with yours, any questions about the capital?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I know that the last time we met, we talked about a potential progress report.
Oh, yes, from?
And I know I shared some information with the Board of Ed to share with you, Kathy and Vince in terms of what that could look like. And I'm just curious because I think it's important for us, and I think you agreed last time, that we should show the progress of the work that we've been doing for the K through eight. And, you know, I just would like to get an update because I think that's important for us to have during this budget cycle.
I think you're asking about a tracking document, Bruce.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's the, we all had conversations about, I know I sent you guys an email, went to Nancy, back to you guys, so...
Yeah, and Christine sent us like a sample, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we do keep track internally. We have an internal document that keeps track of everything and, you know, we're, we're open to, you know, talking about if we wanted to do some type of collaborative form so that we're kind of keeping track. I think what I would want to communicate generally to town council, to the Board, to the community is the Friar Report, just like when the town does any type of facility review, you get a cost and that's a 17, 18 cost of the K-8 report and it does not figure an escalation. So, I would just be, you know, I would want to be careful about using that 60-something million as like where we're trying to get, get to because every year, it escalates from that. That was last year's number. If we were to do all the projects this year, it'd be X, you know what I mean? And next year, because there is escalation every year with these projects. So, you know, depending on what that form looks like, you know, we, I think that it's important to kind of show this is where, this is how much we've achieved by school, all of that. I think that that's a great idea and just finding a way to do it so that it sustains itself over several years and that we're not trying to hit a target that is a 17, 18 number. You know, that would be something that we just all have to talk about together.
So, and I appreciate that because I think Vince briefed me a little bit out in the hall and I think, you know, us as council, we have the plan and that's a planning document. So, I look at it as a planning document. I understand that those numbers that the Friar Report generated may be outdated numbers, but how, we need to use something to try to budget with. And there are some assumptions that could be applied to adjust for those concerns.
Absolutely.
So, obviously, I know when we talked about it and I, I volunteered my services, you know, a couple of times to, you know, let's work together to try to come up with a solution because I think it's, what, we're two years working off of this Friar?
Just one.
Just one year?
Yeah.
Well, this is our second year.
This would be the first year that we...
We budgeted.
Yeah.
Budgeted, okay.
For the Fri, because we, it was launched in 17, 18. So, this was the year that we started.
Certainly influenced things last year. It certainly influenced things last year.
Yeah, this year.
Yep.
This budget, this capital and the major projects in this budget, yeah.
So, and, and the thought process was, and I think we've talked about it, like, do you guys have a plan for this? And I think it was talked about that you guys have a plan.
Yes.
So, I think using that plan and implementing it into some type of progress report of how we're doing so we can reflect it because there are, there are a lot of initiatives that the town or the community needs and we also need to make sure that we share that information out to the community. So, it's, you know, showing the great work that we're doing as the Board and the Council making progress to this. So, I think it's crucial to try to have something to understand it. So, in order to plan, I know that number is old, but where are we trending? And I'm assuming that you guys must have something that you're working off of that could start with that. And knowing, knowing that every year, it will be adjusted. I think as you talked about the capital improvement, there were some things that didn't show up in your five-year plan, but then it showed up, you know, this year. So, we know things move around, but we need to see that.
Yeah, often, we talk about this, it's similar to, we have a technology plan. Sometimes PTOs accelerate that plan and so we get things done a lot faster and then the plan, everything moves up. And I think that's the same as last year's capital. We didn't anticipate, anticipate that much, so it accelerated the plan. So, then some of the projects that we probably wouldn't even see in the seven-year plan get moved within that seven-year plan now because we've achieved so much. So, we, we do adjust it and then we have to adjust it if there are reductions that are made. So, it's, it definitely is a, you know, a fluid document, a living document as we go through.
Absolutely, because I know that, you know, when the high school project last year, people were concerned about the, all the other schools, what are we doing about all the other schools? And I think we will do great justice to at least start showing what we're doing with the other school and knowing that the Council's planning for what's coming down because, you know, there's a lot of miscommunication that could be out there. I'm not saying that there is, that people are like, well, we're not planning appropriately to address those needs and I want to get in front of that.
Sure.
And I think this will help us to kind of work our way through that. And as, you know, a Board of Finance, because we're acting in this role, you need to understand, okay, this is what we're projecting today, knowing that if we don't get it done tomorrow, that number will go higher.
Right.
Potentially.
Right.
You could have some savings as well because there could be new materials available that didn't exist.
Absolutely.
So, that number can go down.
Yeah.
So, I know that that number is fluid, but it would be great to show the progress and what we project out the next several years.
Paul, go ahead.
Are you all s...
Yeah. I, well, I, well, I just, I know Vince said that he was working on something and I just don't, you know, are we going to get something? I'm just curious.
Well, I, I'm working on things all the time.
Yeah.
Because I'm, because I'm the person monitoring the dollars that the Council and the town has authorized and approved and how it's being spent. And then Matt Ross comes and tells me how things are going and Tim Harris comes and tells me how things are going. And then I quarterly do a very significant report to the town manager and meet with the town manager quarterly and report exactly on the capital expenditures in the project management reporting system. So, I'm constantly doing that. But I very much appreciate what you're saying, Bruce, because there's so many good things that have happened because of the additional funds and bonding this past, not even a year ago, that happened and are happening right now. So, I'm spending time with all of the team members, thinking about how to best report these things. First, to report these things to Kathy and then to the Board and then to do something that's appropriate, that's more public out there. So, yes, we're working on that. And, and yes, we're spending lots of time looking at how the dollars are best being spent and what projects were ticking off, not so much on the dollar column of the Friar Report, but on the, in, deep in the Friar Report where they outline the issues and take photos of things and so on. That's where Tim and his head custodians are spending their most time. They're just saying, look, this was pointed out, you know, this issue, let's fix, let's do it when we can, whether we do it within normal work, operating, capital, or something that they have to propose. And then I have to propose to Kathy that it's going to be coming down the, down the pike.
I don't know, Bruce, if you want to, maybe with Nancy and we can get together and work, you know, on this and to something, if we're going to start sharing a document with the community, you know, together work on something that's manageable for everybody, for meets our needs, your needs and works with what Vince is doing, we can set something up with that.
Yeah, I, you know, I just want to make it clear that I offered that multiple, you know, a couple of times. So, I just want to make sure, yes, if we're all in agreement, I'm, I'm a volunteer, I'm ready to dig my hands in and help. That's, that's what I want to do. So, I know that I created a shell spreadsheet off the side of my desk, thinking what my vision was because I think Christine had asked me, you know, you had mentioned this at a, at a council meeting. I said, it's all in my head and she said, well, can you give me an example? So, I gave it to you guys. So, I was just wondering the timeline of that because, you know, one, you know, knowing that you do have a plan, you do know what we've done, it's just basically just filling in the blanks. With the outlier, like you just said, Kathy, that that number is old, there's going to have to be some adjustments or true-ups perhaps. We as a council need to understand what those true-ups are so we can plan.
I think one of the things just, and if I'm wrong, Bruce, but was that the Friar document is huge. So, for us as a council to say, okay, at East Farms School, even though, and not minimizing it, but the fact that it's, you know, the document I know is a lot, but a few simple pages of, these are the basic things and this is the money. No Wallace School, we did the nurse's office, we did the secu, you know, the main office, those things are done now. What are the other 10 that are, you know, on the docket? Not in detail of every door and every, you know, but basically some, some pieces of, that we've really, I mean, this year that have got, the things that have gotten done that we put in last year, that we asked the public to support, which they did, it's great to be able to tell them these things are done and this is what we want this year and this is why. And the, the piece that, that I'd like to know is just, and it doesn't have to do just with Friar, but where are you on the things that we bonded last year? What money is, you know, I think we had a document we looked at somewhere that was, this is what's left and we're expecting the, you know, to finish it, so. And whether you're banking that money or not, that was part of our, you know, the conversation that we've had with our, with Kathy Egan too, you know, what are you banking? So, just to get an idea for us, what you're, what you're thinking. And I know some things you've told us, you know, so, you know, it's all out there.
Yes.
I guess putting it in something that can be readily, that's readily accessible and not 50 pages.
Sure.
So, but maybe that's something we can work, you know, because they are big documents.
Sure. And, and again, the town, recently, it was in January, Matt, right? With the last quarterly. So, in January, we did sit with Kathy Egan and Joe Swecky and other department leaders in town, but specifically those two and gave our, our quarterly update on every one of those, those bonded items and all the other capital items where we stood on the project in, in the sense of where the dollars are spent or incurred or whatever. And, and also just generally giving an update on each one of the project's status, if you will. And I'll just mention, you know, one, for instance, like the Union Roof.
Oh.
You know, where we reported that we had done the RFQ and we selected...
Yep.
The architect firm, Al Jakunsky, Jakunsky-Humes, was the selected firm by the RFQ and for both of the roof projects, Union and IER, and that we just reported that we're in the stages right now of getting the State of Connecticut School Construction folks to act down the application and, because we would like to go to a PCR meeting and then go out to bid. So, we're progressing good, but dollars-wise, very little of the, those, that big money for those two roofs have been spent because it takes that long period of time to find the architect firm, you know...
Go through the process.
Go through the process, apply for the grants, then actually, you know, put that RFP out there to find the roofers and, and get the project going on. But we, you know, that's the type of level of detail that we sit with Kathy Egan and she asks us all sorts of questions on that, the capital dollars and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Paul?
So, there's kind of two separate things I wanted to ask. One has a little bit of overlap with that, so I'll start with it. I think both of those would be helpful. I know personally, when I didn't support spending 100 million plus on the high school, it was, we have a lot of other schools, we have this K-3 report. You know, I'm glad to see last year, we got ahead. This year, there's some plans and I kind of want to focus in on this 1.7, well, we already have 70, 1.67 million at the East Farms, because one of the challenges, and I'm conflicted on it, because one of the challenges, it kind of came, and I, and I understand the process of how we got here, but it kind of came up out of nowhere, not being on the plans.
It was on, it was on last year.
It was on last year's. And then I, we moved half forward this year, so that's why it's, the full amount is bonded. And honestly, I even understand some of the upside because in the Friar Report, they projected very little reimbursement percentages, I think maybe even zero for all of the East Farms work and we're talking about hopefully 30% on this substantial sum. So, I'm kind, I go back and forth. So, that's a reason to do it, the way we're talking about doing it now, 30% on 1.7 million's a lot of money. The other side is how much of that 1.7 million is part of that K-3 report and how much is architectural creativity? I think it's, I looked at it in detail, I think it's a great plan. I like a lot of things with it, but how much? And I understand everything about escalation and those are snapshot in time. I get all that. We're only one year out from that, but, and Christine from the Board of Ed actually got back to me with some ballpark numbers, but it's my understanding that it's about half of that 1.7. And I'm more just confirming, just to make sure, because I, I really am legitimately going back and forth on this one. About half is part of that K-3 report, about half of it is not. So, half of it's kind of extra stuff we're doing that wasn't initially anticipated, but we also are getting potentially 30% and we were initially anticipating zero. So, are those, is my current understanding fair? Is that accurate or am I off?
Both the Media Center is a programmatic recommendation in the Friar. It's undersized. So, you would find both the move of the Media Center in the Friar and the move of the office in the Friar Report. Both would be in the Friar Report. And there, I mean, there's definitely two ways to do this and we, you know, had kind of a similar, what do we do here?
Yeah.
Because you could just move the office. You could just do that.
Right.
You could. It would probably be around the 700, 800, 1,000 number. But then you're going to move the art room to where the office is and then you're going to have to do a second move.
Yep.
You're going to have to move at some point that art room to the, where the Media Center is and the Media Center over. So, it was, do we do it all together? Both projects are in the Friar Report. Do we do it together and save money by doing it all at once or do it separately and spend more money and almost do redundant work because we're going to move the art room twice? You know, like it feel, it felt like the architects are saying, that doesn't make a lot of sense and you really have a programmatic problem at East Farms and all of us know. If you've gone to East Farms, I mean, I can't even have a meeting there because there's nowhere to meet, that, that Media Center isn't conducive to even having a meeting in that area. It's so small. It's our smallest library in the entire district. So, it made sense that this would really benefit on the teaching and... So it made sense that this would really benefit on the teaching and learning side of things and on the safety and security. So we put it together. But could you do them separately and in two steps? Absolutely.
Yeah, no, and I'm not suggesting we do that. I, I get why we did it the way we, we're showing it. I'm just, I just want to make sure I get that not necessarily, and I'm not saying it's bad, but not necessarily all of that 1.7 was in the K-8. Like, we can't just subtract 1.7 from that 60 million number and say we took, we just took care of that. In that progress report we're talking about, that wouldn't be a fair thing to, to do.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, you're just trying to, right.
I, I think, I, I think I understand what you're saying, Paul, and, um, and I would agree with that because Bob Roach, when Friar was doing the, um, opinion and probable costs, did not price this exact project that we are talking about right now. The firm that priced the exact project is Quisum Mary Arcary. After we, Bob Roach certainly gave us the estimate for the, um, security vestibule. He also gave us the estimate for main office and, um, security vestibule.
Yep. And the media center too.
And I think the, yeah, and I'm looking right now on page, um, uh, 216 of East Farms' Friar Report, and I see a media center number that he put in there too. But he didn't combine all these things and make a project. It's close though, when you combine all those, those, um, numbers. But correct, he did not combine that. Yep.
But they're both in there?
They're both in there. And going the other way, it's, he also assumed 0% reimbursement, I think. I'm not, I'm asking. And we're projecting 30. Is that difference, my understanding of that?
I, I want to say that, um, Bob was somewhat optimistic about security, um, things, um, security improvements in schools. And he was less optimistic about other things, other things, um, doing other projects. So, um, so, um, I don't want to put words in his mouth about, um, you know, what was he, what would he have told me about the media center, um, aspect of it? So, but when, um, we inquired to Rusty Malik, as he said in front of the council, Rusty is optimistic on reimbursement. He's going to attempt for reimbursement for the whole project.
30% for everything.
That is, that is
That's what we're vice of the, what the, um, The architect, the current architect.
Current architect is saying.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, that's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions about capital?
I just got one minor. It's, in, in your operating budget, you have a category that says, um, roof preventative maintenance. And I, I know that we're putting new roofs on certain schools and I just curious of what that really means.
Well, well, um, we do definitely have, um, a roof preventative maintenance, um, program and, um, because we have a lot of roofs and we have issues that occur. So there's, there are, um, a normal maintenance, um, with, with Silk Town Roofing, um, thing that we have going on. At the high school, we have overspent that. I'm being, um, very, well, not dramatic in saying that when I say, we've overspent that area the past, um, year because as Kathy said, we've had leaks at the, um, at the high school, significant issues at the high school roofs.
Yeah, I, I, I see it in all the, pretty much all the schools. And I kind of assume that the high school, because we have so much work to do on the high school. I was just curious on the ones that we're putting a new roof is small number, but it's, is that needed in terms of? It's budgeted?
Sure.
Is it budgeted for that particular school for a new roof?
It's maintenance. It's more maintenance.
Maintenance, okay.
So if we end up having an issue, um, it's in there. And I think it, that's one thing that just year over year we put in there. It's not like a zero-based situation because we say, "Listen, every year we're going to put in roof maintenance." And I feel like, uh, every time I go into a school, I'm taking pictures whenever I do see any issue. So we, we're constantly either going up there and looking at it, you know, having our Silk Town come and do a repair. But you're saying, "Well, you're going to have a new roof on Union."
And potentially a warranty.
Right. So I think we put it in there, but I,
Have to have a warranty.
Right. And we will have a warranty.
Because of the state grant reimbursement, we have to purchase the warranty.
But I will say that we should probably be putting a lot more in, in FHS. So it, even though we do budget it for Union, it'll probably be something where it's going to over expend there and under expend at Union because we're going to be replacing the roof this
I completely, I completely understand that, yeah.
So, I think that's one thing where you'll see a lot of that in our maintenance. Like, we just, we have maintenance amounts that we put in there every year. So we're proactively maintaining all these different systems and structures that we have.
Okay.
And Bruce, it's, it's actually two lines. One's maintenance and one's repair.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, and at, um, FHS, it's, um, $9,500 that's in the budget for FHS's, um, maintenance and repair. But again, we've exceeded, we've, or we're exceeding that.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, I have a question on the, uh, the specific line item of structural architectural. And, uh, I just want to make sure this is, the West District corridor flooring, that was specifically to be banked, that, and it was $300,000. So the total was 325 and that 300 was the flooring?
Correct. So, uh, in the 1920, um, um, structural architectural bucket, we have earmarked the Noah Wallace facade, like the second part of that phase project at 15,000. The IER cafeteria design work, that initial design work, 10,000. And then banking for 300,000 in West District, um, for West District corridors. And then in 2021, um, in the, uh, that same bucket, the structural architectural bucket, where we're asking for, um, or projecting out 500, a need of 550,000. We are, have, of that 550,000 in 2021, we're asking for 50,000 in deferred maintenance, structural architectural deferred maintenance dollars. And, um, uh, in the West District corridor part, we would close the banking needed for, with 50,000. So the total is 350,000. And, um, the remainder is, um, we have earmarked for the last of the K-8 roof issues that are out there. It's not really a, um, it's not leaking or anything. It's not that type of issue, but it's in that age issue thing that we discussed last year in such detail.
Right.
That, that would be the Noah Wallace partial roof, um, dollars. And that is 450,000. And one time, not a banking situation. And, um, and, uh, when I say Noah Wallace partial roof too, it's a whole bunch of small, uh, very small flat roof sections over Noah Wallace, different spots. It's not the, uh, the significant part of Noah Wallace. That's been done. And we're in good shape. So, but, uh, I hope I answered your question about the West District corridor flooring.
So the expectation, it was going to be done the following year?
Correct. Yeah. Uh, we're, we're doing so much work this summer with the, um, West District office move. So that's going to happen, knock on wood, that everything goes well because it's, it's literally, um, in the stage right now where we're soliciting contractors to bid on the project because the, um, DAS has given grant, uh, grant approval. So that project is slated to be done this summer, moving West District's main office. And, um, that's a big, a big project. And it, um, we're, we're thinking in Tim and my minds, and Kelly Sanders, the principal over there, that first we would do the security vestibule and the, um, main office move. And then next, when that's fully completed, then we would be doing corridor flooring at West District. Inside of the operating is the gymnasium floor.
At West District?
Correct. Um, at West, at, at West District. So, and if everybody's familiar with West District, all that's really at the front of the, um, building.
So if the, if the office is moved, the security piece that you're talking about is moved, uh, to the front?
Yes.
I'm using front as a, when you come in and you go to the left of the, to the gym?
Yes.
So the office would be moved from way down the hall, where it is now up to the front?
Yes.
What's where the office?
Um, the, the, um, main parts of, um, the building that are making the switch are the teacher's, um, lounge and workspace.
Yeah.
The bookroom.
Library.
Conference space.
And a really important, um, part, the nurse's, um,
Oh, okay.
Because the nurse's office is actually part of where Kelly Sanders, the principal's current suite is. That is being moved with the main office. So that's going to be moved up closer to the exterior of the building too. And, and attached to the principal's office and the main office. So that allows for families just to come right into the main office if they're picking up a child who's ill, going home, and exiting right out of the building. So that is also moved.
And that's all going to be done next summer?
This summer.
I mean, yes, 2019.
It's slated right now, right now, we're in the stage of soliciting, um, contract, soliciting bid for, for the bid.
Okay. So that Noah Wallace is done, then it would be West District? And then we're looking at
The last remaining one.
For the next, for the next following year? Okay.
Yeah, and Union's security vestibule is, um, also currently out to bid. So that, all of it, I should not just say Union, the security vestibules are out to bid.
Well, at least Union is at the front of the building.
Right. There'll be a little bit of reconfiguring there, but yes.
Yeah. Reconfiguration and improvement too with that.
Well, with the philosophy being the nurse's office, the office would all be at the front as you come in with security in place, which is not the case now per some of the schools, as much as.
Right.
Just say that. As much as. Okay, Bruce?
No, I don't have
Anybody else? Okay, that takes care of capital for the moment. Grants.
Are we, uh, before we go to grants, are we taking a break?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 6:30. Why don't we take, yes.
Yeah, I mean, usually, I don't even have to go over to you on both.
Because I think that's the end for you.
Yeah.
So I don't, I think you might want to just do
A few grants shut off.
Two grants would be done. Safe because there's a lot of food.
Okay, then. Grants. I guess, I have, the question for me is open choice. And I know that's a big, uh, a significant number of dollars for open choice. And, um, if you see anything, we talked about what you, what you saw as changes coming up. And if you, I mean, you've budgeted with what your, the expectation is as to the governor's budget at this point. I mean, the best is, we're going to be budgeting and you're going to be budgeting, but that's, that's where we are as far as those dollars being spent at this point, right?
Right.
Okay.
Unless there's some big change.
Well, that's, I mean, we're all keeping our, holding our breath with all that, but as, as far, I mean, you're just going along like we are with the
Yeah.
Expectation that that would come.
Yeah, we would stay at the 3% that we have, uh, open choice student. That gives us a certain level of funding from open choice and that's what we've considered here on the grant page too.
And I know that continually we keep hearing about the magnet schools and how the price is going up, the cost per student. But you've identified that, I mean, you've taken care of that as far as your budget's concerned with what we know
Yeah.
Of students going and, um, dollars from the state up until this point, I mean, as far, as best we can.
As best we can. I, I'm, you know, I mean, the frustration is that if the magnet schools don't get additional funding at the state level, they come to us and increase the tuition levels. And so I think, you know, we, we can handle what they have communicated to us, but it is an increase. It's not only an increase in tuition rates, um, but it's also an increase in special education's hourly rates. So if we have a student from Farmington going to a magnet school with an IEP, uh, they charge us back for the services they provide on, by hourly rate. And they're increasing hourly rates as well in that area. So they've signaled to us that that's what we're, they're doing. We've communicated back our frustration because
Sure.
In some way, you know, in some areas, they're increasing by a pretty substantial amount, which there's no way their contracts for teacher salaries are, are going up that level. You know, so I said, "Well, how could we get a 30% increase in that hourly rate?" There's no way there's a 30% increase in your contract for a teacher's hourly rate. You know, so how did, how is that? And, you know, they feel like maybe they hadn't been charging up districts enough. So they did like a recalibration or something like that. But we've definitely communicated, um, that we don't feel that that's a fair increase in one year.
Sure.
So we'll have to see how the state budget plays out and if magnets don't get the funding they're anticipating. I think they are getting additional funding, given the governor's recommended, um, budget. But it's, you know, we, we do anticipate that we will be paying more in tuition costs and in, in hourly rates for, um, special education. But we do pay that out of open choice funds.
Right.
Pay it out of our operating budget. So we take in open choice funds and we send all that tuition money back. Well, we send it to CRAK.
Yes.
And in G3 in your budget book, you can see exactly what Kathy's saying. You can see the different schools, the different CRAK schools. It's all outlined and the dollars spent.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And the other, on page four, G4 is all the open choice dollars, the support, you know?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on any of the grants or if you have questions on any of the other, um, on revenue enrollment comparative to any of the other sections? If there are any questions you have or things you'd like more information on or? Okay, I guess we're, we're good now. And I'm just going to ask if, just to confirm one more time, as far as you know at this point, um, you don't see anything drastic looming as far as what your, um, any changes from the, I mean, that, you know, we see all the time, depending on what happens with collaboration and different things, we're all watching those things as to what kind of percentages we get for, um, for bonding and all of that. So we're all watching all those pieces, but
For the grants?
For anything.
Nancy, the grants?
Anything.
I mean, uh, I think, I think I'm for excess cost. I think I'm seeing it level right now. And, um, so what, what I've been projecting are maybe even a little bit more, but some of that has to do with the children that we put in for the excess cost. So that's increasing in Farmington. So, um, so in excess costs, and I know that there's a, at the state level, there's a group studying, um, how, um, towns get reimbursement for special thing. But I think that's quite a ways out, you know, about change. That's my, my, just my personal feeling. And I don't know if Kathy has any thoughts on that too. But, um, so I don't really see a lot of up or down with the grant things in that, in that world.
Right now.
And I know Joe's probably much more of an expert on ECS than I am. I know they've had a step-down thing occurring, but I think it's planned for and we're, we're seeing it. And, um, on the federal grants, um, it has so much to do with the equations about the makeup of the children in Farm, and families in Farmington. And, um, you can see on the federal grant, um, uh, total, if you're on G2, um, page G2, um, year over year, you know, 17, 18, and then 18, 19, you know, those, those, if you look at those numbers, it's slightly a little bit higher that we got in federal grants. But again, that has to do with, um, specifically like equations with our demographics, you know, who's in Farmington? And then you get a little bit more assistance.
Yeah, with increased free and reduced lunch, we'll get increased federal funding. And we do have an increase in free and reduced lunch. So we're seeing that increase. And as far as excess cost, it's, um, you know, there's ECS and then there's another ECS and then the excess cost. They should have used different
Yeah.
But the excess cost, I mean, there's a real worry going down, uh, not next year, but the year after and beyond. There's a real worry for us and for, um, districts like Farmington. Because if they end up going with the collaborative through this Connecticut finance project, it would, um, mean that we would be paying our share and
Mm-hmm.
Additional, because there's an equity, uh, formula in it that would, uh, have districts that are, have healthier fiscal, uh, environment, pay more.
Mm-hmm.
Even though we're not spending that, we would have to pay more into this collaborative, so, you know, we're, I, I know that my organization has been vocal about, uh, not being interested in a collaborative, and we'd rather continue in the way that we are funding, because we, like I said during the presentation, you know, we've done a lot of work in Farmington to create programming within our district,
Sure.
And done a fine job at that, and to go into a collaborative and then almost be penalized for that would not be something that we'd be interested in, so, um, you know, we have to keep an eye on that going forward.
Well, thank you. I just, I've seen some of the testimony, and it's just, it's not right now, but it's, you just have to keep an eye on, future.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else in general for the Board of Ed? Okay, I would say, if there's anything that we think about, that after today, and looking back through, we'll let you know, but, um, thank you very much for your presentation and all the information, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Onward
Yes.
To the girls' game, right? Okay, for our, that's the Farmington High School game, I'm talking.
The Farmington High School.
Yes, just for anyone else that wants to know.
Semi-finals.
Semi-finals tonight, yes.